Drive Church of Christ and remain standing to pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're so thankful to you for this great city that we live in. We're thankful for the mayor and each of the council members. We pray that you'll give them wisdom tonight and help them to guide this city in a way that would be pleasing in your sight and best for each person that lives here. We're thankful, Father, for this city and for the leadership that it has in this area. We're thankful, Father, for the prosperity that you've blessed us with, for the jobs that we have in this area that people can work and have their dignity and support their families. We're thankful, Father, for the many stores and for the cafes and all the places of business so that we can have the things that we enjoy. Thank you most of all for Jesus who came and died for our sins that we might have eternal life. We pray that you will bless this meeting now, bless each of us in our lives, bless our families and our friends that are sick, bless them with better health. Guide us always, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Curry. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Mrs. Fox?
Jerika Fox, 501 Vine Street. I'm here on behalf of downtown Popper Bluff. First, I would just like to say that I'm sure all of you have seen in the paper, but I wanted to let all of you know that our dog park is now open. We still have a few things that aren't complete, such as the water fountain and our benches aren't in place yet. But I wanted to thank all of our sponsors, of course, because without them we wouldn't have the park, but also the Popper Bluff Street Department, Park and Recs, and then Municipal Utilities Water and Electric Department. So without their help, we wouldn't have a lot of the amenities that we do. I'm here tonight to request permission for the sale of alcohol in the city's free parking lot. This will be another event that our organization will be adding. It will be May 4th and 5th. The evening of the 4th, we will not have alcohol sales. It will just be on the 5th from 10 to 4, just as our festival is.
What kind of event is this?
This will be a barbecue street war is what the name of our event is. Every year at the Butler County Fair, they have barbecue competitions and they no longer have room for it. So the fair has given downtown Popper Bluff that event to run with. So Jack Altman, the president of the Butler County Fair Board, is helping us with this event. And so we're creating it as a street competition and moving it from September to May.
Now, once again, what location was this?
We will be requesting the closure on Vine Street. We would like this event to be on Vine Street since the majority of our businesses are there and the Iron Horse Festival's on Main Street. So this gives an event for those merchants that are on Vine. It will be from Fifth Street to Broadway, so the two blocks there.
And it will be blocked off, right? Okay. Thank you.
Where are you going to have your barbecue cookers? How many do you estimate you might have?
Last year, Jack had eight to 10. So technically, we could probably just close off from Fifth to Moran, but just in case we have more competitors this year, we decided to extend that to Broadway. We will have the competitors line up actually in the street in the parking spots, similar to what our vendors do at the Iron Horse Festival. And then the free parking lot area that we have, we will barricade that off for alcohol sales and then we'll have a stage, just like we do at the Iron Horse Festival. We'll have entertainment all day.
All alcohol will be confined to that area?
To that one area. That's correct.
Where will the public be parking?
All of the streets surrounding, just like we do for the festival.
Because the main parking and the two blocks was taken, that's why I was just wondering where they were going to be designated.
Well, I would hope at that point our one-way streets are two-way and so they can park all.
By May 4th?
That's my goal. But they would have, you know, all of Main, all of Broadway, Cedar, Cherry, Fifth, you know, the Black River Coliseum parking lot, Southern Banks parking lot. All of that will be available. I have already spoken to several businesses, Minute Print being one of them, since they kind of use some of that parking lot. There's only a few I have left to speak with and that's many of the vacant ones, vacant buildings. I don't see that those property owners will have an issue. But other than that, all of my other property and business owners have signed the form already saying that they're okay with the event.
With blocking it off in front of their business?
Yes, that's correct. Any other questions?
Does we just need a verbal approval? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other citizens input? Now we'll move on to workshop items. Item A, the city council review request from the Popper Bluff Airport to seek bids on the sale of antiquated 1991 Dodge pickup truck. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, this is a 91 Dodge pickup that's been moved around from Motor Pool to the police department, to the airport. Airport has no use for it anymore and neither does any of the other departments. We're just asking permission to advertise for bids for sale of this truck, hoping to get anywhere from $1,000 to $3,000 for it.
How many miles does that own it?
You know, I'm really not sure. I'm sure it's a lot, so.
Would it work for a city manager's vehicle, Mark?
I guess it could. It might be a gas hog, though.
Make a motion, we pass to the voting session.
Second.
Motion second to pass this item to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council review request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a request for a conditional use permit for a daycare center for up to 80 children in a C-1 neighborhood commercial district for property located at 1150 Herschel Best Boulevard. The applicant is South Central Community Action Agency, Chair of Ann Smith, Post Office, Box 6, Wyonona, Missouri.
This is our first planning and zoning item without Mr. Avery, who's been here for how many years? This is a request for conditional use permit for a daycare center located at 1150 Herschel Best Boulevard for up to 80 children from the South Central Missouri Community Action Agency. This item went through planning, zoning, and was recommended for council approval with two stipulations. First stipulation is that the conditional use permit would go with the operator and if someone new takes over, they must apply for a new permit. And the second stipulation is the applicant must meet all the city's requirements for daycare facilities, as well as any state statutes or stipulations.
No questions or comments, entertaining motion. We list to the voting session on the 19th.
Our motion may be moved to the 19th March voting session.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council review request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to one rezoned property from RS2 General Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. And number two, a conditional use permit to operate an outdoor sports paintball business at 2318 North Main Street. The applicant is Jeff Hovis, 2241 County Road 4th and 534, Popper Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, this request is rezoned property from RS2 General Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial and to approve a conditional use permit to operate a sports paintball business located 2318 North Main. That's where the old brick factory is on Main Street. It's now owned by Mr. Jeff Hovis. This property is currently split between commercial and residential zoning designations. The request is for the southern portion of the property to be rezoned to C1 Neighborhood Commercial to have uniform zoning, which will allow Mr. Hovis to obtain the conditional use permit to operate a paintball business. This parcel of property is approximately eight and a half acres, which leaves plenty of room for a buffer for the residential neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission and Planning Department recommended approval for both requests with the stipulations that all requirements be met for the paintball business prior to opening and the conditional use permit will go with the owner. If the business should change hands, a new conditional use permit application would have to be submitted to the Planning Department in order to continue with the operation of the business. If you have any specific questions about the business of the property, Mr. Hovis is in the audience tonight.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and get this out now.
You could have answered. I know you have parking, off-street parking. I had some calls. That's why I'm asking these questions. So all your parking for your business will be off the street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because there's no sidewalks there, people were concerned about young people or teenagers walking to your business.
Yes.
And they were concerned, are they going to be bringing their own paintball guns or they're going to have to rent them from you?
There are two options there. Either they will rent them or buy them from our business or they will bring their own. If they bring their own, they're going to have to use our specific paintballs that are biodegradable and meets the city's standards.
And that's not the issue. The issue of these people are if these kids are walking down the street with the paintball gun, is somebody going to get all bent out of shape of it?
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Yeah.
Can I, I'll address that. The, our rules and regulations are, I believe, are going to help that issue. It's not going to be a bowling alley setting. There's not going to be a lot of kids standing around. You know, up there, it was all ages. In this particular business plan, we have set up for children under a certain age are not going to be allowed to play unless they are accompanied with an adult. So, you know, there's not going to be, you know, 10 to 12-year-olds walking up Main Street with their own equipment to play because they're not going to be able to unless they have an adult with them. And I don't, I'm not for sure, but the insurance companies I've checked with, they made it sound like that's, you know, at a certain age, they have to be accompanied by an adult or guardian. So I think that would honestly take care of it, of that issue.
These people were just concerned that
Absolutely.
The teenagers, young teenagers, might be out on the street with a paintball gun and people think they're out there with a gun.
Yes. I can look into that.
That's a concern I had. I'd be fearful of some teenager walking down Main Street with a, in full camo, carrying a, and I understand that paintball guns and most toy guns are identifiable, but there's been several cases where they weren't quickly identified and there has been some fatalities. I'm just really concerned about the safety of the young people and the other citizens around that area. You know, having those kids, having those, and like you said, I understand what you're saying about the folks, there's not going to be a certain group of them there, but still, there's going to be some that's going to ride a bicycle or there's going to be some that's going to walk down Main Street or down some other street. I'm kind of fearful now when I see a child with a toy gun that's identifiable. I'm still fearful that that may not be a toy gun. And so those are, those are my concerns and I've had a lot of phone calls in the last week about that. And I just hope there's something that we can avoid.
Have you, have you driven through Blodgett near that paintball facility?
Yes, yes.
To be honest with you, I've never seen anyone out on the street with a gun.
Well, I mean, that's like almost out in the country, you know? Yeah.
Yeah. The closest town to there would be Sikeston.
Be Sikeston or Benton somewhere, yeah.
And I do understand your concerns about that. It's something I had actually thought about. And I'm really, I really believe that the age limits are going to prevent a lot of that. I mean, if, you know, they might walk up there a couple of times and be turned away without an adult and then that'll prevent them from coming up there.
Jeff, what are the age limits?
I'm sorry?
What are the age limits, if you can be specific?
Let me get my business plan, hang on just a minute.
Oh, sure.
And these are subject to change with the, if the, you know, zoning and planning or the ordinances change. I believe it's going to be, unless I can find it here quickly, I believe it's going to be under the age of 17 or 16 are going to require an adult permission to play. I don't want anybody younger than, I'm sorry?
4.1 is your section that's got the ages.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so the age that we are actually targeting to try to get, try to get to play is 16 and up. That's going to be our main business. Now, we might have, I've, I've thought it would be very beneficial if we can have, you know, we have different daddy-daughter events and things like that. It'd be a lot of fun to have a daddy-son event, something like this. In that case, we would probably drop the age to 13, something like that. But they will have to have a guardian, a parent with them. I can't keep people from walking up and down Main Street, of course. But with the, with the facility we have, we are going to have guns available there to people. And I'm hoping that doesn't happen, hope that's never an issue, but.
How many of these courses are you familiar with? I mean, whereof in the region or?
Blodgett is one.
Where is that?
That is over just east, northeast of Sikeston.
Off of Interstate 55. You can see it from the road.
They even advertise.
It's not in city limits, this Blodgett.
I'm not sure if it's in Blodgett city limits. I know there's, there is a town of Blodgett.
An incorporated, unincorporated area or a town or?
I really don't know. I apologize.
They even advertise on KFBS 12, Steve. This thing.
Are you aware of any other paintball courses in a city limit?
There are quite a few. Do you mind if I refer to Dusty Johnson? He's actually, as far as management-wise, he's actually helping me get some things set up, things like that. You might have some questions for him also.
Need to give your name and address, please, sir.
Dusty Johnson, it's 205 Betsan Lake Lane. The Blodgett one is in city limits. Springfield also, at one time, they had three in the city limits. I'm thinking they're down to two now. And St. Louis has some in their city limits as well. Some of them are in old factories, some of them are outside, some of them are a mixture of both.
Yeah, there was four or five of them in Austin when I lived down there where we played. They're all over the place down there, inside the city limits.
The one in Springfield's owned by OTC. OTC's straight across the street from, from where that one's at.
Now, when your schools are close to residential areas primarily or they are in commercial areas?
I'm going to say commercial areas. As I said, the one's straight across from OTC College and then up the hill from It's a Steak and Shake and they have a sidewalk in front of it. It's just an old building from downtown, but there are several in city limits.
I think Jonesboro has one or two, don't they?
Jonesboro has one outside. I don't know if they have one inside.
Okay.
Branson used to have one smack dab in the middle of town. I've played at that one a couple of times as well. It was right there on 76.
We had one a few years ago out on PP Highway, too. Ray Gilton had, it was quite popular.
As far as these
Nice things for people to do. I'm not saying that.
Yes.
My opinion, you know, as far as any safety concerns, we've got three outstanding officers with our police department that are going to be working on this and you know what they do on a daily basis, so they're going to take care of all the safety and they always have.
No question about that. I don't see that as being the issue.
I think it's a big benefit to us all, sir.
And they're not going to have any bright overhead lights and it's going to have netting around it. I mean, he's
Yeah, we're not, we won't be conducting any night games or anything that would disturb anybody's peace in the evening. And we've actually looked at several different buffer areas to try to double up protection of anybody that would be at risk of anything. As said, the paintballs themselves are biodegradable. If you, it's just a tile and aw shell that has corn syrup in it. I mean, essentially is what it was. You could eat it, it don't taste good, but you can eat it.
Got past.
I make a motion, pass to the voting session.
Second.
Motion second, pass this item to the voting session on March 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will discuss selling property owned by the city and located at the airport. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, across the highway from the airport, there's approximately 10 acre tract of land that the city owns. It's been leased out to Mr. Nelson for several years for farmland. We advertised for bids for that this year and received no bids. The city really has no use for that property. We're asking permission. Right, rental bid. We're asking for permission to sell that. We do have an interested landowner right next to the property. The property does have an aviation easement, meaning, you know, nothing above a certain height can be constructed on it and farmers well aware of that or anybody else would be made aware of that that would bid on it. But we're just making, asking for permission to sell that land.
Make a motion, pass to the voting session.
Second.
Motion second, pass this to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to action required items, Bill number 8057. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to install a new, a new from factory manufactured home at 1014 Clyde Street in RS3 Central Area Residential Zone for Sylvia Yancey, 744-20, Highway 142.
Move for first reading, Bill number 8057, by Captain Unley.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to install a new from factory manufactured home at 1014 Clyde Street in Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading, Bill number 8057, by Captain Unley.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to install a new from factory manufactured home at 1014 Clyde Street in Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption, a bill number 8057.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8057 is passed. Bill number 8058, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a faith-based, not-for-profit facility for ministry and rehabilitation housing at 416 South C Street, which is zoned RS4 Residential for Crossroads Ministry, care of Jimmy Wagner, Post Office, Box 1592.
Motion for first reading of 8058.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Jimmy Wagner, doing business as Crossroads Ministry, for the operation of a faith-based, not-for-profit ministry and rehabilitation facility at 416 South C Street in Popper Bluff.
Motion for second reading of 8058.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Jimmy Wagner, doing business as Crossroads Ministry, for the operation of a faith-based, not-for-profit ministry and rehabilitation facility at 416 South C Street in Popper Bluff.
Motion for adoption, Bill 8058. Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8058 is passed. Bill number 8059, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting a tourism plan for the city of Popper Bluff.
Motion for first reading of 8059.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance approving and adopting a tourism marketing plan for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading, 8059.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance adopting and approving a tourism marketing plan for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri. Move for adoption, Bill number 8059.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, I think it is a good plan. I liked it and I'm not sure who all put it together. I'm sure you guys probably provided the lead for us, but it reads well, it makes a lot of sense and thank you for some good work.
I concur with that. I would like to add the airport board, when I attended it Wednesday night, they were also interested, they're like sometimes the first impression when somebody visits our city. So if they could be included in some brochures or some of your literature, that would be great.
Another roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8059 is passed. Bill number 8060, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the city to solicit bids for property owned by the city and located by the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport.
Motion for first reading of 8060.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing a proposed sale of real estate located at the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport. Move for second reading, Bill number 8060, by Captain Unley.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing a proposed sale of real estate located at the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport. Move for adoption, Bill number 8060.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8061, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the city to solicit bids for the sale of an antiquated 1991 Dodge pickup truck.
Motion for first reading of 8061.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the disposal of obsolete or surplus property.
Motion for second reading of eight zero six one.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the disposal of obsolete or surplus property.
Move for adoption in bill number eight zero six one.
Second.
Motion second to adopt, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number eight zero six one is adopted. On item FF, the city council, the city of Popper Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open meeting law, section six ten point oh two one point one, point two, point three, point nine, point eleven, point twelve, point thirteen, point fourteen, revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Massingham?
First of all, I'd like to announce that we've hired a new city planner. He will start the position on March the twenty-second. That individual is Matt Winters, who's the assistant director of Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission. Matt serves on several city boards, including planning zoning, he's very familiar with a lot of city projects, he's worked on flood buyout projects with us, he's also will benefit us, he's administered a lot of different grants at Ozark Foothills, and he's written a lot of different grants, so I think he'll be a big plus for the city, and can't wait for him to get started in March.
Good.
Think he'll be a real asset to us. Also, I'd like to talk about the, the site for holding municipal court in the city council meetings. We've looked at several locations, we have an empty building down at the bottom of Second Street where the utilities had their cable outfit in, and it's where the drive-through window used to be on the front. We've looked at that, there's quite a bit of roof leaks. We could renovate the front end of the building, but it would require removing a lot of walls, probably the ceiling, doing the roof repairs. Also, heat, heating and cooling has a few problems with it. We were offered some space on Broadway by the Saint Vincent de Paul, where they're putting their, they have their food pantry, there's some space down the street from that. We looked at that, it has no bathrooms, it would require extensive renovation. What I'm trying to do is relocate these meetings and court with the least expense we can have. Another location that's been offered is Rogers Theater Building, it's kind of the same way there's, where they propose, not leaking, but a lot of walls would have to be removed and some renovation. What I'm recommending is, we've looked at the back meeting rooms at the Coliseum, met with staff down there, the judges looked at it, the court staff. What we would do is come in from behind the pool, there's a long corridor that comes in behind the pool area, it goes into that back portion of the building. We would have to barricade one end of the hallway, which would not be hard at all, and then barricade part of the area going out into the arena. The rooms in that back end are large enough to, the judge says, to hold everybody that would be there in court, so we wouldn't have people standing around like we do now, because we do not have room for everybody in that room. I know at one time, there was a cost associated with that of around ten thousand dollars, I'm not sure exactly where that came from. Part of that was to run fiber back to the building for the computers. I was notified about two weeks ago that the utility department had extra fiber that they weren't going to use, they had no need for it. And they had a couple of rainy days, they were kind of slow, so we went ahead and had fiber ran from the front of the building back to the back. Nothing's been hooked up, but the fiber is now there, with really the only cost to the city being the utilities' labor. Even if we don't move back there, that will benefit the Coliseum later for wireless internet and other computers. The only additional equipment, technical equipment we would need, I've talked to Michael Pry, our IT person, he said we would need to spend about twenty-four hundred dollars on some switching and some cabling and hooking up the fiber, so I really think this is our best bet. The only thing we're not sure about at this point is New Wave hasn't gotten back with us on whether we could broadcast the council meetings live or not. Definitely, they could be recorded and put on YouTube like we've been doing, but as soon as we hear back from New Wave, I can let you all know about that. So I really just kind of need your all's feedback and see what you all think about it. I think we can be in there fairly quick, I think it's, I don't think it's going to affect the Coliseum that much.
Mr. Massingham, would this municipal court and council chambers be in the same space?
Yes, they would be. And at this point, would, you know, we would use tables and chairs, I'd, if we were going to be there for a long, long time, we might possibly think about moving the judge's bench or this bench down there, but not unless we really have to.
How long do you anticipate being there?
I guess it depends on till we get a different building. Might be a year or two years, I don't know. If y'all want to think about it, and you know, we can discuss it the next meeting.
Was there any discussion about the, the city council meeting in those rooms in the front off the lobby?
We did have that discussion, just, they rent those out a little more than the ones in the back. You know, it just required a little bit extra setup. I realize that's probably more handy for the public than to park on the side and come in that side entrance.
Well, that back room already has a stage, because they hold the beauty pageants there, and I mean, it's kind of, it's a long room.
It is a very long room.
And I think it's more accommodating than probably that front one, and they do not rent it out as much as they do the front rooms. They use it like when they have concerts, that'll be the VIP room, sometimes the venues need that room for their room to, in their contract, they ask for a special room or something sometimes. Do you think that our means are going to conflict with other things going on with the Coliseum, and that's always been a big concern? The elephants are there, if there's setting up tuning and music, I mean, you know.
You know, the staff down there feels like we can work around that, I hope we can. We were concerned about, when they have court, there's always one of the clerks there to take payments, there's actually a, in that back end, there's actually a concession area where we could set up.
I noticed that.
To take payments, and yeah, I'd remind you too, this isn't just council meetings, it's planning zoning and plumbing board, electric board, airport board, and you know, there's a lot of different meetings, but.
Make do for a while. Seems reasonable to me to make do with that for.
Like I said, I was just, you know, really hate to be paying more rent somewhere else for another.
I agree.
Space or another building, if we can do it someplace like this. The only, only thing I did notice is when you come in down that hallway, you could smell the chlorine from the pool, but I would say the chlorine's a lot better smell than what this building's starting to smell like.
Yes, sir.
It's cleaner smell.
It is cleaner.
I just want to make sure that we, people can't roam around, you know, make sure that it is barricaded, you know, secure, because withholding court and, you know, as we know, sometimes our meetings can be heated, and that's why we have an officer on duty, so we just want to make sure it's easy, accessible, and, and well protected, not, because there's so many places to go in and out of that building.
Right.
Which is scarier than this one that has one door.
I'm not a big fan of using the Black River Coliseum for stuff like this, it's built for an arena, but I think we're kind of cornered to a spot now where we don't really have a lot of choices. If I had my druthers, we wouldn't even touch it, but I don't think we have a choice right now.
Just temporary.
I know, but I don't like being in there temporary. Like you said, you got the airport board, you got the park, you got the tree board, you got the planning zoning, you got us, you've got court. It's a lot of things that this Black River Coliseum's got to work around.
And the parking, how they designate the parking? That's another concern.
Yeah, I mean, the high street parking, and, you know, the problem down the bottom of the hill was, you know, the parking down there really is the Hillcrest Pool area, which in the summertime, they have swimming lessons in the mornings, they have, pool opens at one o'clock, you have a lot of kids running around, and then.
And the noise of the pool as well, I don't know how sound that room is, but just, you know, the laughter of the children in there could be a concern, because it is busy, if you look at the parking lot, it's busy all the time.
Oh, it is, I mean, it's packed during summertime.
I mean.
Sure?
I was just wondering, how many square feet are you needing for, for this?
I don't know right offhand.
I think the court was asking for ten thousand.
They were asking for ten on a new building, but of course.
Do you remember from your, certain of your studies when you were on that board? When y'all were doing that?
We only met once.
But the court, court was asking for, I think, ten thousand.
Ten is what I was thinking, but I didn't know if that was necessary just for temporary purposes?
No, it's.
It's due to the new bill that passed, and they have to be accommodating to.
Ten thousand. I was just curious, we have a lot of empty buildings downtown that are for sale, that haven't sold, that they might be interested in doing something, so I mean, it's something that I can at least reach out and find out if they'd be interested. And I know you guys don't want to spend a lot of money, which is, I mean, I understand the thought of using the Coliseum, but if there is a space that's large enough, depending on the price, that I could at least bring back as an option, or give to Mark as an option.
I don't know what that square footage is on that building, like the, as I said, it's a pretty long building for room.
Right, because when we were in there for the Farmer's Appreciation Day, we were talking about it.
Because that's where I used to teach aerobics, they use that room for aerobics, so I don't know where that would go, but.
And one thing, I mean.
They're not using it for aerobics now, they've got that all consolidated down the other end, from what, from what they told us the other day when we toured it, they weren't using it. And they've had the Farmer Appreciation Dinner in there, and they've had, the Butler County Fair used it for their.
We are there next Monday night, actually.
Yeah, so see, that's, there's, I think there's going to be, I think there's going to be a lot of conflict.
It will.
We might run into a few problems, I don't know, it's.
Or square foot, I'm sorry.
Could we move this to the next meeting to see what she can come up with?
Yeah, one thing we need to be, well, Jerick and I can talk, but we need to be concerned about wherever it goes, there's going to have to be fiber ran to that building to connect with our computer infrastructure, so depending on where it is, that could get costly.
And our IT guy is the one that first told about the price on what it was going to cost, but you know, that's before you get free fiber optic too.
Right, so.
And I guess all of that has been used then, probably?
Yes, it has.
And then when we toured it a few weeks ago, they were talking about how that building was built, you know, nearly twenty years ago, and it, it's not really up to date for today's technology, so there's going, it would involve a lot of wiring and such, you know, which all can be done, it's just, you know, for a cost.
The square footage there would be larger than this room, wouldn't it, Mark? Am I, am I, am I thinking correctly?
This one's not the problem, though, I think it's the court that's the problem, that has to have the larger amount.
Yeah, this is a little bit wider than down there, but it's also, down there's longer, so.
Well.
Mr. Mayor of Allen Probst of the bench?
Yes, sir. We just need your name and address, please.
A lot of you don't know me, my name is Jerome Thomas Henry, I'm a citizen of Popper Bluff, Missouri, in Butler County, and I live on twenty-five, twenty-six High Street, right behind O'Neil School. I'd like to call this here a meeting to order, if I may. I'll be eighty-five years old next month, I'm going to celebrate my birthday in North Missouri, that's where I was born.
Congratulations.
Please bear with me.
You bet, yes, sir.
Sort of a historian in Butler County. Mark Massingham's grandfather, sheriff, he taught me all the history I know about Black River, I can even show you where the first fire plant was. Wasn't on the blanket, it was in Black River, on his side, right below the horses park. People, I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings up there, but what you, people are talking about, I can't even hear it there, you need a good PA system. And what you, people are talking about, people out there aren't listening to you. What you're talking about, you talk to each other, you need to be talking to citizens in our, in our city, city limits, because they're the taxpayers, they're the ones that bear the burden of Popper Bluff, the people that are on the gravy train, that make the big money in Popper Bluff, they live outside city limits, of course, they pay taxes on cars and the Walmart, things like that. Are you bearing with me? Okay. Does anyone here know where the most hallowed ground is in Butler County? The most hallowed ground in Butler County, does anyone here know where it's at? It's right behind you, it's on, oh, Main Street down there, and that's where my address is. You know, I went to church downtown, went junior high, went to high school, I joined the military downtown, I worked at the paint store, I was the guy that drove that blind truck, man drives this truck, when I was in high school, I walked down those steps and joined the military, came back to my hometown, Popper Bluff. I spent, I spent thirty-eight years in the medical field. Before I was thirty-nine years of age, I was a hospital administrator in three hospitals in the state of Missouri, before I was thirty-nine years old, no one in the state holds that record, and these hospitals are up beside you here. I retired from Nyberg Clinic, I'm a medical laboratory technologist. Doctor Nyberg gave my first job, given to him, I worked with all those doctors, I knew most of these mayors over here, old Lord Matthews, we're, we're darned to him. My brother there, the mayor, I used to call bingo for his mother. But I would like to see the old downtown Popper Bluff come to life. I don't know how many of you have seen the sign at the north end of town that says, welcome to Popper Bluff, welcome to Gateway of the Ozarks. My brother, Paul Kenner, designed that sign, he's now deceased, twenty years ago, but he was on the first downtown committee when Louis Snyder had it. If you notice a tree something downtown, my brother had something to do with that. When he died, they sent trees all over the United States. What are you people going to do with this building? You say you want to put a city hall, forget it, this building was built with square nails and barbed wire. They should tear it down, now what's it going to cost to get this building tore down? Can anyone answer that?
We had an estimate of about four hundred thousand dollars, I think, for this building.
That's a lot of money, hey, these people in the city can't afford that. Hey, get some jailbirds out of jail up here, likely treat them like kings up there and show them how to make a buck, do a little work. Tear this building down, make it presentable, and sell it to a real estate developer, put apartments here for low-income people. Now let me move back to Main Street. Have anyone ever lost a sailing ship on any building on Main Street?
Yeah, it's above where the old Disco Mart was.
Huh?
It's above where the old Disco Mart was. It, it's on the top of the building where the old Disco Mart was.
I know this lady, she lived in a house that I helped build when I was in high school. Lived on West Davis Street.
As in the first grade.
Yeah. Let's get back to Main Street. How many of you know our governor? Eric, he's a good friend of mine, I met him at American Legion when he was running for governor. He left summer role for politicians, and come on set with me for an hour, we're old Navy men, we had a good discussion, and that man could come back and help Popper Bluff, don't run that man down. Now, I'm not a Democrat or Republican, I'm just sitting on the metal fence watching a parade go by. But let's get back to Main Street, no one has come up to the idea, and they won for the next thousand years, how to develop Main Street. Well, from Cedar Street to Pfeiffer Street, take the bulldozer in there, clear that thing down, and put some portable buildings in there, make them presentable, not too large, make several of them, and lease those buildings out to local merchants and people of interest. You know, they could have all your antique stores, jewelry stores, clothing, you name it, and make them, put the gates, doors on and gated fences, and rent, rent them out or make them pay cash or sign contracts. From Cedar Street to Pfeiffer Street, put these several small buildings in there, rent them out, make them presentable, and I tell you, on the weekend, those people will come, just have this open for a weekend. I've seen it happen in Dallas, Texas, and that's an experience. These people at church want to go somewhere, they'll go right down there. Well, if I can't speak well, my councilmen, I will not speak ill of you, I love all of you, you're doing a fine job, but remember the people, one other thing I want to address is your Lucy Hall. That's been coming going for a long time, as long as I can remember. Citizens Popper Bluff can't afford a new city hall, you got a location sitting right in front of you, down Broadway, the old parking place, the city paid five hundred thousand dollars for that structure, and look at it now. Some good hard work would make a good city hall right there. This town, the tax, these people Popper Bluff and city limits don't make that kind of money building a city hall. This town, the tax, these people popped up and said, limits don't make that kind of money, build a new city hall. Make well with, make do with what we have like the old timers did. And we'll have a rainbow over our head. Thank you, my citizens. I'm proud of everyone of you.
Thanks, sir.
Did I go through them yet?
No. Thank you.
I come from a long line of bad preachers.
Do you have anything else, Mac? No, if you all want, I mean, we can discuss this again at the next meeting, see what Jerica comes back with.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got one other thing. I think I didn't have it in my hand. It is. Figure out how to start here. I was out mulching leaves Saturday. Got about two acres and I get on the mower and for some reason I start thinking about city stuff. It should be an escape, but it's not and you know, I've talked to a lot of people lately, some of you all, some of the citizens. In the last few years, the city spent a lot of resources on growing our town's business community. You know, Jim Bailey's done a lot with shopping centers. We have Eight Points. But somehow during all that, we've, and not on purpose, I don't think, we've I mean, in my opinion, we're starting to lose our neighborhoods. We're starting to lose our residential areas. Right now, I think that's one of our biggest challenges. We're losing them to people that don't care what their homes look like. They don't care that their grass is fifteen inches tall. They don't care that there's trash in the yards. They don't care what their neighbors think. Some of these people are homeowners. Some people aren't. Some people rent places. It's not just in the older neighborhood. It's beginning to infiltrate into all areas of Popper Bluff. And I've talked to city administrators in other areas and, you know, they're having the same problems. There's people moving out of the city limits out in their counties and because people want a bigger lot and a bigger home and but in the process, we're, I mean, I just feel like we're losing our neighborhoods. Is it the city's fault? I believe part of it is. We've kind of let our sidewalks deteriorate over the years. We've let condemned buildings sit there for year after year without tearing them down. Part of the reason for that is we just can't afford to tear down but a few a year. The landfill cost for tearing down a house is anywhere from four to eight thousand dollars just for a house. That's not, that's not a business. That's a house. We budget about thirty-five thousand dollars a year to tear down houses and we could probably spend a hundred thousand a year tearing down houses. So on that end, you know, right now this budget can't stand more than what we're spending on tearing down houses, but you know, pride, it all starts with pride and if the citizens don't think the city has pride in its city, then they're not going to have pride in their neighborhoods. So what I'm, I'm just telling you all this to let you know that I'm committed and I think our staff is to work very hard this year to try to clean this town up and some of these neighborhoods. I'm going to start meeting at least weekly with code enforcement and going over certain areas. And I think it's to say, safe to say that all of you are committed to this also. We just can't let this continue, but we need help. The city can't do it. The city can't do it all by itself. It's going to be a community effort. It's going to be everybody lives in their neighborhoods. You know, coming up on April twenty-eighth, this Buff Up the Bluff. I realize that's only one weekend a month and that's not going to take care of our problem, but it's a good place to start. A lot of those people don't have vehicles to take their trash to the site. We do provide elderly pickup, but we use every one we can to do the elderly pickup. So I guess now I'm talking to the citizens. If you have a pickup and you have a neighbor that needs something taken to buff up the bluff, you know, jump in and help your neighbor. Help clean up your block or clean up your community. Like I said, this is not just a city problem. It's, everybody's included here. You know, years ago, we had the nickname of being called Little Chicago and seems like that kind of sticks with us, but I don't want to become a new nickname of Little Detroit, so. Like I said, I, I just want you all to know that I am committed and I think our staff is that we're going to try to make a big difference this year.
Mr. Mayor, I want to applaud you for your comments, sir. The appearance of our city speaks loudly, either positively or negatively. And we, just as simple picking up trash around can make a big difference, you know, and that doesn't take much money there.
No, it doesn't.
You use Walmart bag and throw it in it and throw it in can. And I think coordinating with code enforcement and court, somehow things are falling through the crack shit. I drove by a vehicle on my way here tonight that's been sitting there beside a house for over three months now. And I've turned it in three times. Something's breaking down apparently. So I, I think leading us and challenging us, encouraging us and the citizens, council doing what they can, department heads, we, we can make a difference. I think it'll be a really good thing. I appreciate you providing leadership, sir.
Thank you.
There is another area I think where part of this is coming from. It's from the trash haulers. Like on the bypass, I have followed them out and trashed just, I meant to talk about the big trucks, not the little ones. And, you know, Mark, you know, as you go east there, it's just terrible. Well, they're coming down and turning on that ramp and going that way and it just blows and they're not, they're not securing their load somehow.
Okay.
I went, I did talk to one of the drivers and, you know, he just seemed to be kind of like it wasn't his problem. He didn't know what to do about it and didn't have a way to solve it.
No, that's all I have.
We've had, already had motion in the second, so we'll turn this public hearing.
Public hearing, meeting.
Meeting.